Commission meeting, January third to order. First item is pledge of allegiance. Commissioner Cox, would you go just in that?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The agenda good, and Lisa?
The only thing we're not going to be doing over a few minutes.
Okay. Okay, I'll make a motion, we set the agenda for January twenty twenty four.
Second. Moving second, the agenda be set for today's meeting, January third, on favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, Mike.
All right. Well, thank you for allowing us to come and visit with you guys, talk a little bit about our program. So we're Unified Fleet Services. We are a vehicle leasing procurement and management company. We only work with municipalities, so all we do is government work, we don't do any commercial or consumer work, we just work with municipalities. It's a little bit different way of doing business and trying to serve a bunch of different types of business, doesn't really work for us, so. So we only focus on municipalities, and again, on equipment, anything with tires or treads, we work with, so. We work with municipalities, the key obstacles that we see is a lot on obsolescence. We're kind of briefly talking a bit about that when you have older vehicles that sit for a while. We help out in that space. Budget constraints is the other area, rather than paying, you know, cash and the full price of the vehicle, using leasing can help with budgets. And then we also help with optimizing getting the right vehicle or the right equipment for the childhood that your team has.
You haven't brought any BMW up to us.
We haven't asked for one. We priced one X five for a drug task force in Denver, and after they understood how fast those things depreciate, no one's ever asked again. So, yeah, they just, they just don't hold the bike. The funny piece being, it would never make sense, but if you wanted a Porsche nine eleven, those actually lease really well, so. Might give the wrong image to the citizens, though, anyway. So we do equipment leasing, fleet management, and then we integrate upfit, and so for a lot of law enforcement stuff, lights, cages, all that. We also do the flat beds, service bodies, anything that public works or others may need. So one of the key things we like to recap, most people are aware of this, but we just like to reset where we're at now. We all have been through what's been going on the last two years with inflation and supply chain. Everyone was hit hard, but no one was hit harder than municipalities when it comes to your vehicles. So as you see, twenty-one Lariat to twenty-three F-150 Lariat, MSRP went up fourteen percent. But the big kicker was your guys' government discount dropped by sixty-one percent. So the net effect to the government was a thirty percent increase in your cost of vehicles on an F-150 in this example. Consumers got hit hard, but nowhere near this hard, and so as a result, just buying a vehicle, it's gone up. Leasing a vehicle, it's all gone up as a result. One of the bigger issues that we've seen is really the supply chain side. We just did a bunch of orders for Chevy Tahos. The rounded up numbers for the western region, there were ten thousand government orders and twenty-four hundred were actually approved and allocated. So that's how difficult the supply chain is. So if you don't have an order in, you're not getting one, and if you did have an order in, you'll maybe get one. And so that's part of what we've been helping clients with is putting in the orders early to just guarantee our spot at getting the type of unit that you want. It's not every unit, F-150s are easier to come by, but you know, if you need Tahos or you need diesels, it's hard to get. The other piece that's been a major difficulty has been the upfit timeline. So when people are trying to schedule to get lights and sirens installed, those delays are sometimes out six months to try and get anything at home, so. So that's the new world, it's getting better, we believe it's going to get a lot better, but what we like to provide to clients is flexible certainty on our lease program. So what we do, we have a five-year lease, the first three years are deeply discounted to try and just cover the depreciation that's going to happen on that vehicle over those first three years. The other reason we use it is because it's always under warranty, and so any issues that you have, your maintenance budgets can be slashed quite a bit because you're going to have all that covered under the OEM warranty for those three years. Really, all you're covering is maybe some tires, but you know, oil changes, that's about it. If you have somebody within the county that does that sort of service, you know, happy to have them do it, you don't need to go anywhere else for that. Some of the biggest results that we see for our clients, fuel efficiency has been a real big item, depending on the units that we move to. We are pushing some of the clients towards hybrid F-150s, can be really great. In law enforcement, for instance, when there's a lot of engine idle hours, the new hybrids, you can just sit in your truck for an hour and the engine only kicks on for about ten to fifteen minutes to recharge the battery. So you leave the heat on, the cooling on, whatever you need, but you're only running the engine about ten minutes to keep it recharged. So it saves a lot of fuel efficiency and wear and tear on the engine. But the real goal is we're trying to really get that depreciation, get rid of the depreciation. We're usually able to get about seventy-five percent of it, on diesel, sometimes we can make it so, at the end of the three years, you're getting back almost everything you've already paid us at lease rates, just because of how those have been holding, so.
Mike?
You can come in.
So we lease anything, it really doesn't matter, we will do the BMW if that's what you want, Sam, just let us know, we'll run the numbers. That's all we do, we're just, we're math, so we look at what the cost of the vehicle is, what it's going to be worth in three years, and that's how we back into what those lease rates are. So this is just a couple of vehicles that are pretty common. These Subaru Crosstrex are really great admin vehicles that a lot of departments and entities have used. The Tacoma can be great, but really, those top four, the Explorer, the Tahoe, F-150 and the diesels, those are really where we see a lot of clients purchasing stuff, so. For the diesels, we set the price at seventy-five hundred a year. If you want it lower, we can make it lower, we like to keep that as the floor pricing, because at the end of the three years, you get all the money back that's going to, when we sell the vehicle. So whatever the profit is you get. So on that one, you know, we can go as low as about thirty-eight hundred dollars, and you'll still get about two hundred, or two thousand dollars back at the end of the three years. We just like to keep it a little bit higher, just to make sure you're getting some good money back, and so, but there is some wiggle room on them. The flip side's true, too, if you have vehicles that, for whatever reason, someone's putting twenty-five thousand miles a year, thirty thousand miles a year on it, let us know. We'll calculate that out to make so the lease payments are a little higher, just to make sure when that gets turned in at three years, and it's ninety thousand miles, that you're still getting a check back. So maybe instead of spending eighty-five hundred a year on a Ford Explorer, maybe it bumps up to twelve thousand, just to make sure we get you some more money back. All that money is just going to make sure that the payoff at the end of that third year is lower, so. If we charge more, we don't make any more, we make the same amount, no matter what that lease rate is, so. So when we talk with municipalities, one of the big items we talk about is really this, with how the budgets work. We're talking to one sheriff's office right now, and we said, well, for the cost of one Tahoe, you can get six on lease per year, and if your budget's sixty grand a year, just keep running six new ones and cycle them every three years, and then you can avoid that giant maintenance budget that you're running every year. There's really an happy insurance, obviously, if you total a car, you hit a deer, you know, they're going to have to deal with those things, but the maintenance, you know, the transmissions, the engines, batteries, all that stuff, all gets eliminated out of the warranty. The other piece on our plan, we say for three years, but if you just hate the unit, or you want something new, or we come to you and say, look, you've got twelve diesels, and you've got eight grand of equity in each of them, and I've got twelve new ones for you, how about we do a swap? We can exit at any time, so if we want to get that money back on the used ones, maybe at eighteen months, we say, hey, let's swap vehicles. So you don't have to go all the way to three years, it can be at any point in time, and we work with you to swap vehicles whenever it makes sense for your team. If you have upfit, you know, lights, sirens, cages, probably not going to want to look at that eighteen-month timeframe, just because of the time of putting in all of that equipment. We like to keep that towards the three years, it just, it works a bit better, so. And if you decide, look, we just want to hold on to these things, you just keep paying the last two payments, you paid it off, it's yours, do whatever you want with it, so. When it comes time for liquidation, we work with you guys, and that would apply to like the vehicles you have out there, if they're ones you needed to get rid of. We come, look at what the year, make, model, van mileage is on it, and evaluate what the market's looking like. For some units, there's a lot of them out in the market, we're going to suggest that we go wholesale, and we're going to sell them off to a dealer and let them take care of it. If the days on lot are going to be, you know, a hundred and twenty days, we're going to let them take that. If you have some diesels or some Tahos or something like that right now, those things will sell in thirty days. We'll give them to our retail partners and maximize how much money you guys can get back, but it's all up to you, we advise, you guys decide how you want to sell them. And again, all of the profit goes back to you guys. Also, the upfit, we integrate that into the lease if people want. It's really a service we provide, we don't make money on doing this, but it helps out, so if somebody wants to have all their lights and sirens put in, we can have it all upfit ready to go before you actually take the vehicle and start working on it. We'll coordinate with any one of the outfitters throughout Salt Lake Valley, or anyone up north, anyone that, like you guys, if you have someone you love to work with, happy to coordinate with them, and we can bundle in that cost of the equipment into the lease as well over those three years, so. The goal behind it is really to get this one-hour turnaround, it's really a pain when you're sitting there waiting, have vehicles down, waiting for the new equipment to get installed. Our goal is just to make it so it's easy for your team to get back to work and not have to sit around and wait for a vehicle. This is an example of some of the equipment we have, every time we do an outfit, every department has their own specific stuff they love, so. These are the basic components that are usually involved, but we can customize it out however you want. You want more equipment, it'll probably cost a bit more, less, obviously be a bit less, so. And the other piece, like I said in the beginning, if it's got treads or wheels, we'll do it, and so we do heavy equipment, so yellow wire, we will do UTVs and ATVs. They really don't lease great right now because the incentives aren't really there, happy to do it, though, and also the service body and the flat beds, so. So really, any equipment that's needed by the county will be all leased. Most of our contracts are on annual payment, we can do whatever makes sense for the county, though, if you want semi-annual or quarterly, we can drop to that. Again, no mileage restrictions on them, because we've set what the value is going to be at the end of each of those three years, if you sell us for more, you get the money back. If for some reason you decide, well, we're just going to run this one into the ground, then we're just going to have to talk at the end of that, if it's got sixty thousand miles in two years, well, it's not going to sell for that residual, and so we're going to have to true that up at that point. The only thing that ever holds up people sometimes is this resolution, because it's a multi-year finance, we do have to have the commissioners sign off on a resolution to hammer into it. It protects both of us, just to make sure we're all on the same page, yeah, you know, you're financing these vehicles with us, and we're all on the same page with that, so. So any questions?
We never even considered leasing stuff for the sheriff's office because of the drilling holes and sticking things in, I guess you're good with all that now, huh?
Absolutely, yeah. Yep, we've worked with a lot of sheriff's offices, obviously, we prefer the fewer holes, the better, but. And the only reason I said is just want me to sell it in three years for you, you know, if you can get away with not having the light in the center, in the column there, you know, that's, that's a really difficult item to remove and to sell it with the spotlight, it don't sell well, but we can price it out to work either way, so. But we've worked with a lot of sheriff's offices, you know, pole patrol units, K-nine units, you know, so.
Sell the equipment. Such as everything, the cages, the light bars and all that, we purchase that outright, that's not part of the lease, right?
Either way, if you want, so different entities do it differently, sometimes they want to pay cash for the equipment, and they just want to deal with the upfit on their own. If they want to do that, we're happy for that, that's actually a whole lot easier for us and less headache. A lot of them, however, will order the equipment with the outfitter, we just get that bill of what that total cost is, we break it into the three years payments, and we bundle that into the lease. So you're just basically paying thirty percent per year on that equipment, that's, that's how the lease would increase. At the end of the three years, you own all that equipment, and we can swap whatever will go to the next vehicle, and whatever we take from the old one, put it into the new one at the end of that three years, for whatever we'll swap between.
Do you do the work?
No.
I was going to say, because that's, these guys are six months with it sitting in front of somebody's house, getting that done.
Who do you guys use for upfit?
BLS, Vehicle Lighting Solutions.
They're right down by our office.
So what we would probably do, we can't guarantee any results, obviously, what tends to work out well is we coordinate with sheriff's office or whoever needs equipment. You know, we work with semi-service and others on the flat beds and stuff as well. If we know what's coming down the pipe, you want twelve new vehicles, we're talking to BLS, Premier, Five Star, all of the guys that we know, getting bids on your equipment, and then seeing who's going to have the best schedule to get it done. Depending on the type of equipment that you have, you know, it's a labor issue, it's also a parts supply issue, so depending on what you want, it may be BLS, we can get you in in two months, the other guy's not so much. But we try to coordinate when we know the vehicle will be there and just try and push as quick as we can to get it back out for you. No guarantees will be faster than that, but so far, we have been.
Yeah. Just a working relationship we have with some of them.
So would our lease start when you receive the vehicle and start the upfitting, or does it start when we get the vehicle after it's been outfitted?
So it starts when I have to pay the dealer, which is when we take possession to get it to the upfitting, and that's why we want to try and coordinate that as close as we can. Sometimes with some of our dealer partners, they'll give us up to sixty days before we have to actually start that lease, so if we can get that extra sixty days, we'll take advantage of it, but. But it just, it just depends. The safe side is to save, the moment it's, you own it and the work's starting on it, that's when the lease would start.
I know it's a huge headache for you, but that's, that seems like a huge seller, you know, having.
That's why we offer it, yeah, and admittedly, the law enforcement units are the most difficult ones for us to work on, but we also know it's some of the most important ones. Admin vehicles are easy, and we, so we know where we're going to work hard to make sure we do that business right, and hopefully, we'll pick up the other businesses as we go, so. So yeah, so we're more than happy to do it, but we just want to make it clear, if your upfitting price has gone up, it's not because I've added a dime to that, you know, we get paid by the bank when we originate a lease, and that's just what we get paid, so whatever equipment you get, we don't, we really don't care. We just want to make sure you're getting the equipment you want, we get a signed PO, this is what you wanted. Any change orders after that sign, and we put that into the financing you'd have to pay for, if you want to add a different laptop stand, and it's fifty dollars more, you'd have to cover that, because that's not part of the loan, but, yeah.
Is there a benefit for us to do multiple vehicles at one time, rather than, because, because right now, we're on an annual new vehicle, you know, we have just a few deputies and they swap out to take turns. Is there a benefit to do all of them at one time, like would we get them faster through the outfitter, or just keep doing them, okay?
It's, I, I, it's, there's no real science behind it, if you do at least five at one time, outfitters are quicker, it's easier for us to work with the bank and the dealers to get it all done. Five's really the easy minimum to start with, it just makes it a lot quicker. Now, you may not get all five at the same time from the outfitter, they may be staggered a week or so, or something like that, but it just puts them a slot where the outfitter can say, okay, I have these five coming in for Rich County. This is their bill, I've got all the parts sitting here, and these are my two guys that are working on Rich for the next week and a half, so. Yeah, if we do it one at a time, those ones get delayed a lot, just because they keep getting bumped over for a bigger contract coming through.
Okay.
A little bit about us, you guys know Bodie and Cleet a bit already, and we've worked together for a while, a few of our references of people we work with as well up there, so, so, yeah.
So are you a complete fleet services, like you write us about maintenance, things like that, or is this just the purchases and the uptake for the lease of the vehicle?
We can do that, but it's a separate service to provide that, most people don't want us to be doing that, well, we're happy to annoy the heck out of you guys to get your oil changes if you want to pay us for it, but it's not part of our contract, what we're going to require you to do it. You know, if you want the warranty, follow what the OEM says on oil changes and stuff, and we will do it, but it's, but it would be outside of just the lease contract.
I was just wondering if this was going to be kind of the traditional fleet services where we get a call and say, yeah, unfortunately, we had too many pursuits on this vehicle, so our tires are bald, or we're going to need it quicker, and then you're like, wait a minute, that's not part of the schedule, so we've got to fight about that, so, all right.
No, no, that, and that's why we don't want to do that, is, is, yeah, because.
I just retired after twenty-seven years as commander of a narcotic unit in central Utah, and I used these guys for several years, and I was able to take and my maintenance went down to zero, because in fifteen, I started rotating out our own vehicles that we owned, and I rewrote my whole grant and put it towards equipment. When I left, all my guys had their own pole camera, all the latest night vision, numerous tracking devices, and from when I started as commander, and we had just the old junk, but we were able to rewrite the whole grant, because I had zero maintenance on my vehicles. So it saved me so much money, plus, I could rotate out to a different vehicle instead of getting burnt all the time.
So I think right now, we have a few vehicles.
Yeah, they have a few vehicles currently.
So those ones, we can convert over to this three-year plan, that's what we'd suggest you do, main reason being is you get all the money back when we sell the vehicles. On the current lease that you're on, I get all the money back when you turn those vehicles in, so we think it'd be advantageous for you guys, and obviously, we'd like to get more vehicles and show off this bike and hopefully save the counties some money and.
And then like the vehicles sitting out back, if you want to sell them, we can help liquidate them and get you into other stuff.
We've done that with the, I don't think, do we have their name up there? So Eve from City's one that we're working with right now, we're able to liquidate all their vehicles, and they've basically paid for two years' worth of leases by liquidating all their, their old units, and just getting them gone and getting them into something new, so happy to do that if it's, if it's of a help for you guys, so, yeah. Anything else?
Brandon, he's our road supervisor, he.
Yeah, what about pickup trucks?
Yep, anything you want, F-150s all the way up to the 450s, you want 550 or above, those have to be special order, but we can do all of it.
The diesels are seventy-five hundred a year for a diesel pickup?
And that's in GMC AT4 and SLE, at the end of three years, those are currently trending to get, I think, eighty-five hundred dollars back, is what the current projection is at the end of the three years, depends on which number you run with, if you ran them in two years, which you might be able to do if you don't have as much equipment in them, you know, you'd be getting about, actually, twelve grand back a year, too, so you can run those in a two-year interval rather than three, but.
I think you'd put it like a field tank, you know, strobe light on.
Oh, yeah, be able to do that all the time, yeah.
Would the, just thinking from our department's perspective, we're pushing anywhere between twenty-five to thirty thousand miles per year. Obviously, within three, we're kind of starting to push that envelope of the value. With the upfit costs, would it, would it kind of wash out to do it every second year, you know what I mean? The department would be using it for two years, and then we'd do it on the third, instead of doing the three, and then on the fourth.
So I would, look, we'd have to double-check the numbers, the upfit cost right now is really where we're seeing a huge increase. I mean, these used to be our undercover upfit, used to be four thousand dollars, and that's gone up to seven in the last ninety days, so the equipment's really what's driving it more than anything. I would say still probably stick to three years, but maybe we just have to slightly increase the lease rate for those units. That being said, if you're able to run diesel, we may not meet up that lease rate at all. A lot of guys want to run F-150s or Explorers, and for those, we just have to, because they just don't hold their value, but if you can run diesel, then we could be fine.
I'm not quite sure the viability of that, trying to do an emergency start on a nice cold morning.
Yeah, yeah.
Didn't call that out.
Yep, but, but we can work through it.
The new ones have the heaters in them, the rapid heaters, but like that AT4 has that off-road tire and everything, it'd probably be pretty good.
Oh, yeah, that'll.
I didn't say yours.
Yeah, we should have drove mine out, yeah, they're, I don't think you, I don't think you'd have any problem, but it's public safety, so I don't want to, you know, say you'll be fine and then really have an issue and.
I rode all four diesels when I, when I rotated out to them, and I never ever plugged one in, and we get in Millard, you know, we're down, probably not as cold as here, but it gets pretty cold. I never ever plugged it in, and fired it up every time I needed it, but they're guaranteed to start with that new six, seven, I think Chevy has similar, they're supposed to start like within forty below, I believe, for the oil fields and stuff up in Nebraska, is from what I've read.
On the, going back to the timeframe of the three years, if we were to be looking at an undercover vehicle, obviously, it would be receiving less mileage. Can we stretch that out to six, or does that push the envelope of the value?
Well, the answer is yes to both, but what we would do is run it as a three-year, if you want to stay in that vehicle, we would just do a refinance, start a new lease for another three years, and see what that projected three residual is, and we'd just reprice it based on what it would be at that point. We don't want to do a six-year lease from the start, if we're going to keep the payments lower, we could do a six-year lease, but it would assume by the end of six years, you've paid off the vehicle. And if we do that, it kind of negates the whole point of doing this, because you know they have value at the end of the life.
I guess my, what, my only question is, is, you know, the cost of the upfit versus the value of the constant re-change, because we put so many mileage, so much mileage on it.
Yeah.
I want to maximize the value that the county's getting back from the vehicles as compared to, you know, is it better to sit on it and own it, or is it better to turn it in, but the upfit's going to wash out any savings or any refund we might get out of that?
Yeah, no, it makes sense, I think, yeah, if you have numbers on what your maintenance budgets have been going through, we could look at what that might, what the savings might be by doing that. I would guess it should be able to be a savings for the county, and the other reason being is reducing the number of stray vehicles you have to have, if we know they're always under warranty and, and they're less a bad hassle, so. But even, the reason why I say the diesel, the ninety thousand mile diesel at three years, we're going to have a solid residual. A ninety thousand mile Ford Explorer, it's not going to be as good, we can, we can budget for it and see what the numbers look like, so. That's, the upfit swap at that three years, that's why I want to push that out a bit more, I think that's probably going to be a bigger cost for us, and downtime of having to swap the equipment in and out, because it's, you know, we love the guys at BLS and Premier and everywhere, they're just so dang busy, you know, but if you've got to wait four months to get your vehicles out, and we have a twenty-four month lease, well, we've just blown twenty percent of the time sitting in a shop, that's, that's a waste of time, so. So we could figure it out, customize it, see what would be the best fit for you guys, so, thank you. Anything else? All right.
Appreciate you coming up, thank you. We'll have some discussion on it and get with you.
Yeah, absolutely.
On the ones that we already have leased and.
Yeah, and we can talk through some numbers and see what some models might look like for stuff, so.
Don't get them diesel, these diesels, they'll be able to catch us guys that got diesels. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thanks for driving up.
Oh, yeah, thank you.
Randall? How are you guys doing this morning?
Good.
Pretty good, how's it going?
Good.
It's good to see you.
Yeah, good to see you.
How are you, Randall?
Doing all right with the cattle prices?
Yeah. Pretty good this, this fall. We just needed all them dead ones last spring to be alive this fall, and they weren't.
How's Annalisa doing?
Great, thank you.
Good. So I've asked Rich Schaefer to come with me today, he's our. So I've asked Rich Schaefer to come with me today, he's our newest board member, so I wanted him to come and. Meet you guys face to face and so you uh. Know him when you're out on the street in Mike's Market or something?
I've seen him around.
So he's really been a good asset to the board, I think right now. The uh five members that we've got are probably the the five uh best of. Board members that we've had since I've been on the board, they all look. Not at just the meeting time of what they can do to improve the district, but even when they're off on off work and. They're thinking about ways to try to improve the quality of the service uh that we're giving to our first responders. So anyway, with that uh. It's the end of uh twenty twenty three and starting a new year and I thought I oughta come in and update on what. We've been doing uh this last year and planning on uh in the future. With a huge amount of growth that's going on over in Garden City and I just saw on uh. The R C T that they're planning zoning meetings. Going to discuss a hundred ninety four townhouse unit there. On uh Pickleville Parkway and uh Sweetwater Parkway or near that area. And so uh we have been able to get into a purchase agreement with Nate Perry on a one acre lot. On Sweetwater Parkway, uh just north of the lot that uh. Travis Hobbs has there, if you're familiar with that area, so it'd be just directly north of Travis's place. And we were able to come up with uh. Equitable uh price that benefit uh us and benefited Nate, don't you think?
Yeah, I think so, I think it worked for both parties.
Rich has been spending a lot of time with Nate, uh being one of his uh golf course. Deputy sheriffs to make sure people are keeping up. And so he's able to make a lot better uh partner in negotiating that with Nate than uh. Myself or the other board members that don't uh interface with him as much, so we got a really good deal there.
The golf courses, who owned it previously?
Yes, Nate, well Nate Nate Perry owned that property and. That's gonna be fairly close to the new nine holes.
Yeah, he's proposing nine holes down below on the flat ground, just behind that, so.
Just be west of it and uh. When Travis told me that he was planning on building a house on his lot and the next, within the next five years, I wanted to let him know that we were thinking about buying that property and putting a. Satellite station there and I didn't want that uh be a surprise to him and he appreciated me giving him heads up on that. So anyway, naturally being able to buy this lot and outfit it with the uh operational equipment that we need to have, trucks and personal protection equipment. That's gonna require some increase in our budget and uh. So we've been talking about uh increasing property tax to help offset that. And uh that would be maybe this year or next year uh. When we increased, I think it's been four or five years ago that we increased the property tax uh. Uh it's not, not a whole lot, we only asked for an increase of like forty thousand dollars to our budget at that time. We were advised that we should do that maybe every three or four years, uh put in a property uh tax increase to help offset uh costs of inflation and. Upgrading the services to meet the higher demand for the population growth. So the board voted to increase the inspection fee on the uh. All the inspections they have to do, uh short term rentals are the main thing, uh last year there's over seven hundred uh short term rental inspections. And uh I don't know uh what you guys are seeing in the county, but we're of course the main. Main recipients of that growth and it's gonna go up with this now a hundred ninety four units and then of course that five hundred RV park that's planned to to start. So anyway, we voted to increase that fee from fifty dollars to seventy five dollars and that would uh start uh first of this year. Uh I don't know if you need anything more, uh I've just got a notice here, I don't know who that goes to. And then if uh anybody has any grief about that, call me cuz I'm the board chairman that uh. Authorized and uh help, well helped, I was one of the guys that voted for it. Have him call me, not the chief, it wasn't his I D, in fact, he was kind of against it, but. We're the ones that have to make sure that we got proper amount of funds to operate with. So hopefully they'll talk to me, I had Annalisa print out the fees that Utah County. Have you been able to give it to them before they, I don't know if you guys have had a chance to look at that. But our fees are significantly less than what's currently being charged by uh Utah County. Some, well, that's Utah County, uh well, when you go fight a fire, you're gonna use hopefully similar type of equipment and men are now fighting the fire and you need the same quality of equipment, so. Anyway, hopefully there's no problems with that. The board has been thinking about uh paying the fire chief a more equ equitable salary and so we voted to. Make his salary more in line with the average salary of uh Utah State Fire Chiefs. And uh you need to keep in mind that he's a one man show, he doesn't have secretaries, he doesn't have janitors. Or people to take care of the grounds and everything like that. And he's on call twenty four hours a day, seven days a week. And he's responsible for everything that's operational in that facility. Uh we realize that he's gonna have to be replaced sometime in the future and with a salary that's comparable to the rest of the state. We should get better applicants uh applying for that job and not uh people that's just looking for a job. And I understand that uh the uh sheriff's department is short uh two guys, uh at least two guys. And I think personally that part of that problem is uh because of the salaries that are being offered are are sheriffs, deputy sheriffs. And so I want to uh. Let you know that we've uh agreed to try to bring that uh salary up uh over the next two years in incremental steps. I don't know if you guys uh have heard of it, but I was talking to Senator Wilson last year and he said that he amended the state parks budget. For the marina upgrade and it's supposed to have a certain percentage of five hundred thousand dollars that would go to the first responders. Have you guys heard anything about that or aware of it?
No.
No, can't say they have.
Okay, so you might wanna get in touch with him and I, I'll get back in touch with him, see if uh. That went through or is a proposal that maybe was not uh. Accepted.
And how would that money go, where would that money go?
Well, he said it was for first responders, so.
Okay, so define first responders, is that just the fire department or is that the ambulance service?
No, that's 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 everybody, yeah.
Is that throughout the county or just specific Garden City?
I understood it's for the county.
Hey, is that a one time fund or is that an ongoing appropriation?
He gave me the impression it's an on on time going.
Well, that'd be interesting.
Yeah. And that's for all the first responders and and then it would be split up according to the way you guys want it to be split up. So also last year, we talked about uh. Having some type of a beach access fee. Wonder if you guys have talked about that anymore among yourselves or with the Department of Transportation to. Start being able to collect uh beach access fees from all the people that come for the day use of our beaches.
It's not really up to us. It's a sovereign land issue, access to the beach is sovereign land. That would have to come from the state if they wanted to charge a fee.
Okay, it seems like you guys would be able to get some type of uh percentage of that back.
Maybe, maybe not.
Yeah. I think I mentioned to you that we'd been up in uh South Dakota and uh. A lot of the places that we went to, there there parking in town, there is a parking fee that you had to pay and you just went up to a box and said, okay, I'm in slot thirty two and. Here's my five bucks.
That's fine, and and so that that actually went to the municipality. Because they had the 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 opportunity to provide the parking, but. You know, as far as the beach access, it's either controlled by state parks or it's controlled by. The individual landowner if they own property right to the high water and or it's controlled by sovereign land, state sovereign land, so. Not not our, not our deal.
Yeah.
I have to say, even if it was our deal, that's something I don't think we'd probably have much appetite for, just barriers of entry to public beaches. I don't think, it would leave a bad taste in our mouth to charge young families to get down to the beach. You know, there's there's different ways of doing it.
Okay, well, uh I realize that that's rough, but you know, I look to you guys to uh look at everything possible.
Yeah.
To get more funding into your budget so you can pay your first responders.
I totally get it, that's a tool that I probably wanna feel comfortable using, even if it were up to us.
Yeah, well, maybe we need to change our tastes. So uh anyway, uh what else did I have here?
The M O U.
Yeah, so anyway, to uh end more in a positive note, as you know, we've been working for several years to try to get an M O U through with uh. Idaho Parks and Recreation and also with uh our own state parks and recreation and we were finally able to get that signed. And uh able to do a training session a couple of months ago with uh. Idaho and Utah and it turned out to be a very worthwhile, successful uh. Training session. You got anything else, Dan?
I think that.
Any uh questions, comments?
I don't think so. If you don't, so what was, if you don't mind me asking, what was um? Uh the chief's salary before and what is it now?
Uh I'd prefer to go into a closed session, talk numbers.
Okay. I mean, but it's public, I'm, we're asking to raise taxes for this money, so I was just.
Yes.
You'd feel more comfortable talking off the record about it?
Yes. Yeah, it's uh gonna be public kno- uh knowledge once it's uh enforced and you'll.
You have, oh, you haven't bumped them up yet?
No.
Okay. That makes sense.
It it's going to happen uh this year cuz we voted uh to do it with this budget, so it'll start.
Yeah, I thought you'd already done it.
It just got passed and now it'll take effect this month.
Okay.
What that increase is on a monthly basis.
Well, we'd support you whatever your board decides.
Yeah, uh like I said, uh. Several years he wasn't given a pay raise, when he was given a pay raise, it didn't keep up with inflation and it's been that way for. He's been a chief now for, I think, seven, eight years. And uh I know several years he didn't get a raise and when he did get a raise, it was minimal two or three percent or something like that. And so uh he hasn't kept up with it and we need to have uh. Equitable wages so that when it comes time to replace the people that we have, uh we can get good applicants to apply for that job. Let's face it, life and property is at stake with what that fire chief is training is meant to do.
For sure, well, we appreciate you coming in and giving us an update.
You bet.
Appreciate Rich coming and meeting us.
Thank you.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Thanks.
Glad prices are staying.
Good to see you. I hope so.
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay. Officer Jared Johnson.
So uh. With the hiring of uh Deputy Joseph Will Cox, um something came to my attention that uh hadn't really been paying a whole lot of attention to. As the technology of law enforcement has progressed and gotten more. Well, that's basically, it's boiling down to two pieces of equipment, the electronic factor and that's the laptop and the cell phone. And uh I'd always, I mean, my family, we've always just done a uh like a unlimited data plan. And so I never really paid much attention to the costs of, you know, what. My cell phone was being used for in the county. And Deputy Will Cox, he's a young, young guy, um. He's a, what brought it to my attention was we were talking about emails going to his phone and he says, I don't, I don't do emails to my phone because it eats my data. I got to talking to him and he's got a five gigabyte data plan per month that he pays his service provider for. And you know, anybody that knows anything about technology is like, well, five gig, that's a fair amount. And then I started looking at what we do and as of right now, there uh are six dedicated. Applications that are on my phone that go for the sheriff's office. One is the emails, uh another is uh the body camera. And an integration between the body camera and then uh another one is. Basically, it's an evidence collection application in order, or we no longer have to have the big cameras. We can use our cell phone cameras and then it uploads directly to our evidence collection. And that one right there is the big, the big uh eater of data. I've gone through eight and a half gigabytes since we started using that application in September. In December alone, one week, three hundred and fifty eight megabytes is what I uploaded and that was, I think, eight pictures of a car crash. Very, very handy for us, everything is combined down into basically one application. Or one piece of equipment, the cell phone, but that does come with a cost. I was under the impression from previous years that, you know, there was a a cell phone reimbursement. To the to the deputies for the uses of our cell phones for county business. After speaking with uh Bill, found out that now maybe that might not be an option where. Any county payment makes our phones totally grammar requestable. If that is the case, um I've heard different attorneys say different things, um obviously you have to go with. Your best judgment on that. I've heard that it's only grammable for what the, you know, the incident entailed. You know, they can't ask for my personal browsing history if they're looking for pictures on that crash, but who knows? One of the easiest things may be to do a specific um department only phone. I spoke with A T and T First Net, uh there's myriad of options that we can do. Obviously, we don't need the latest and greatest uh cell phones for this, we just need something that receives data. And uh can run an application, so it doesn't have to be the top of the line smartphone, but just a decent cell phone that can run these apps. First Net, just bare bones, um they're looking at forty four ninety nine a month per line. So with the the department, we're looking at about two hundred and twenty five a month, twenty seven hundred over the course of the year. If we were to go that route. Now, those are soft numbers, um because there's multiple things we can do. As of right now, we already have the five G MiFi bricks that run our computers and our laptops. Printers and stuff that we use. There is a possibility that um we can, if we get a good enough cell phone, that that can become the MiFi hotspot. And we could get the 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 MiFi bricks back, but those are, I mean, hundred things we can talk about and discuss. There's pros and cons to both. But as of right now, we would be looking at that twenty seven hundred dollar cost for uh five department phones. Uh on top of what we're already paying to A T and T First Net.
It's probably a good idea to have you guys have separate phones for police work, you know, it's hard to have people have your personal cell.
Yeah, it uh, we do get a lot of uh. People that are like, oh, you're my personal police officer, instead of calling dispatch, they they call us directly, but uh. They call us directly, but uh, there is a con, uh, there is a pros to it, uh, when I don't recognize the number, I just automatically answer, this is Deputy Johnson. Thrift County Sheriff's Office and uh, it's amazing how many people hang up and wanna talk to me. But uh, you you are correct, a dedicated cellphone would be much, much easier.
That runs the scammers away, huh?
Yeah, it does.
And if you got one that could do a hotspot, you're saying just get rid of your modems in your car?
Well, there's, there's pros and cons to that, I mean, obviously the cost would be less. But uh, the, the, the problem with that is with the mobile hotspot being the phone. Obviously, I get out of the vehicle and walk away, the connectivity between my printer and my laptop and my laptop and all of that drops.
You have to reconnect them.
Yes, everything's reconnecting at once, but the possibility of a uh. The cost savings, I mean. It it may be, maybe we just have to leave the cellphone in the car, except that does limit us to receiving calls when we're out on an incident, but. I mean, like I said, a lot of it depends on uh. AT&T's got a hundred different plans that they're willing to mix and match and.
Yeah.
And uh, just the cost of service, that was what I was able to nail down, um, forty-four ninety-nine per line, per month. Um. They may give us a better deal because we don't want the top of the line phones. We're gonna have limited applications of what we run through them, they give us the unlimited data, but it, obviously, there'd be a soft cap. With uh, you know, UCs, because we wouldn't be running as much data through them as we do through the MiFi bricks.
Yeah, they gave a presentation on FirstNet a year or two ago and I know in emergencies, it stays up, it runs on a different frequency.
Well, I'll be honest with you, um, uh, the mayor can probably uh, expound on it just as well as I can, but on those huge holiday weekends. Your cellphone coverage just goes really spotty.
It's grab?
When we got those.
Full service, we can't load anything.
But with the uh, with, when we got those MiFi bricks, we were able to get those FirstNet. And with the five G and the FirstNet. Hasn't been perfect, but we have been able to run uh, a lot better service on those big, large weekends.
That makes sense.
UC just gone through the roof.
Even this weekend with the people over here, it was.
Yeah.
I was uh, on patrol on, I think it was uh, Saturday and just going from about uh, fun time rental. To the intersection, I could see where my, my MiFi would say, oh, no internet, no internet. Then it'd come back up and then, oh, no internet and uh, so anyway. Maybe we can call AT&T and tell them to get off their duffs and put in new cameras.
AT&T came up and years ago and. Signed up all the EMTs, you remember doing that?
Yeah.
Is that helped or is anything, I don't know, I haven't noticed any difference, so I don't know.
So, the uh, um, the first responders and their personal, their personal cellphones are allowed to, to join that FirstNet. And basically, what I think of it is, is, is like a line and uh, in an emergency situation, we get to go to the head of the line. To use the phone, um, if the emergency causes the phones to go down, they're down. But uh, that does put us at the head of the line through that FirstNet.
So you have, have you noticed a difference of it being better?
Yeah.
Okay. So you're looking for approval from us to get those phones?
Well, um, if uh, if we think that's uh, something that uh. Uh, is, is viable, uh, unfortunately, like I said, our, our newest deputy. Um, in order, in order for him to do his job, we're going to need some kind of a.
Yeah.
Basically. To be fair to him, we're gonna have to have something.
Yeah. I don't have a problem with it, cause it's just in, you know, it'll come from your budget and two hundred bucks, I mean, even two hundred fifty a month isn't. Much.
Well, it's not like Dale combines everything into, so I'm not quite sure what uh, two hundred and fifty a month here, two hundred and fifty a month there, percent is. It's all real numbers, so.
Yeah.
But uh, if uh.
Dale's, Dale's on board and.
Well, he's, he's on board that, um, we either need to have some kind of remuneration or something the county's willing to take upon. Um, like I said, I, I never noticed it because I've always had the unlimited plan, but I'm also paying almost two hundred and fifty a month for my cellphone for that. Um, but like I said, I, I never paid much attention to it.
Yeah. I don't know, what do you guys think? I'm, I'm, I'm fine with you guys doing it, but I don't know what these guys are thinking.
Well, that means you just gotta keep track of two phones.
Yeah. But one good thing is uh.
So, you all have new numbers.
Well, uh, one of the things that that does kinda raises, one of the things that we have been doing is on our business cards. You get my name and address, or you get my name and my email and you get a phone number to the office. Um, with a dedicated cellphone like that, that I can shut off when I'm not on duty, so I don't have to take phone calls from. From people, cause that's, you know, my time, we can put uh, that number on a, on a business card, so we'd have a little bit more interactivity with some of the uh. Some of the people that we work with, so. Pros and cons to everything, um, unfortunately, we're to the point now that we can't do the jobs without using. Um, like I said, there's six apps on my phone that I, I couldn't do my daily job if I didn't have them and uh. Like I said, for me, wasn't something I thought about, but when Joseph got talking about it. Like, yeah, we're gonna eat your five gig in a month real quick.
Yeah.
And I don't particularly want some busybody being able to. Make fun of my YouTube cooking videos because you grammed my uh, phone.
Okay, well. Sounds like it's go.
You make those?
Well, I think we better talk to the sheriff, I mean, I wanna.
Is he, is he, is he putting you in charge of trying to figure this out for him? We'll, we'll, we'll call him up and talk.
He's not adverse to the, to the situation, but like I said, he wanted me to provide it, the information to you guys to see what you thought on the situation.
So right now, you're telling us that the plan's gonna be two hundred and fifty a year for?
No, twenty-seven hundred a year.
Twenty-seven hundred a year, two fifty a month, well, two twenty-five a month.
Two twenty, okay, two fifty a month, two, yeah.
Twenty-seven hundred a month, a year. And then the initial cost of the funds.
Yeah.
Except for they may just give you some free ones.
Probably. And that is on top of, like I said, on top of what we're already paying AT&T FirstNet for the MiFi blocks, so.
And how much is that, you know, you know, we're paying our most?
To be honest with you, I, I think it's forty-five a block, but I'm not positive.
You, you'll prob, it'll probably be cheaper if you call him up and wrap it into the same plan.
Well, that's what we were, that's what we were initially uh, thinking if that's what we decide to do. I'm pretty sure they'll give us some kinds of discounts for having bundles, um, but like I said, AT&T's got a hundred. To, you know, a hundred and fifty different uh, options that you can do through all of this stuff, so.
So, a- a- on this two hundred and fifty dollars a, a month for everybody to have a phone, how many? How many gigabytes does that give them for?
Unlimited.
Unlimited data.
Yeah.
Unlimited data, unlimited tax, unlimited calls. And that's for how many phones, that's just one?
Five.
For five phones?
That'd be for five.
Would Emily leave on?
That was a possibility that we looked at, she told me she's actually removed her email from her phone, her personal phone, so that uh. She wasn't.
She's always got her, I mean, she's always in the office with the phone there.
Yeah.
So.
The reason I ask is because uh, she had us reimburse for, for her cellphone.
Well, and, and. I can't speak to her, but the trainings that she does have to go to and the emails. It, it's kinda funny, we, we laugh and joke that we're, you know, eight-hour employees, but uh, in reality, it's. It's at least a minimum of twelve per day that you're on duty, cause you're responsible for that, three AM to three PM and then three PM to three AM. And uh, I don't know how many phone calls and emails that I've had come in that are work-related and it's like. Yeah, it's easier to take care of it now than it is to try and remember to get it when I'm back on duty, so. Kind of that gray area where you kinda float and say, yeah, you know, I'm doing value to the county, but what exactly is that value worth? How much does it, you know, do you wanna offset here or there? Just have the county assume the responsibility on the cost on that uh, communication?
Okay. Wanna make a motion or you wanna table it? Do we need a motion for them to spend this money?
Well, we need to talk to the sheriff, I mean, bottom line is, I get it, but we need to talk to the sheriff. And so my suggestion is, is that we try to call, call in between now and the end of the commission meeting and if he's. Wants to move forward with it, then we make the motion then.
Sound good to you?
It's fine.
Okay. Alrighty, anything else, any questions for Jared? Appreciate it, thank you.
Thanks Jared for that research.
Yeah. That doesn't seem like too much for five phones with all unlimited data to me, but.
Well, to be honest with you, um, a lot of it comes down to. Are we to the point that Dale would need to increase his budget in order to cover it, or does he have enough in the budget that it would work if you're willing to, to. Approve it, a lot of questions there that I didn't feel was my place to come and knock on Emily's door, say, let me look at Dale's budget. See where we're sitting and looking at, but uh, he told me that to get this information together and present it to you guys and talk to you about it. I think if you're on board with it, he's gonna have no problems with it.
Good.
Okay. Alrighty, appreciate it. Bryce.
How are you guys doing today?
Good, how are you?
Good.
Welcome. I like your shirt.
Oh, thanks.
Well, state your name and what you're here for, for the record.
My name is Bryce Nielsen, I'm the Rich County Emergency Manager and I'm here to talk about uh, our emergency operation plans. And some other aspects associated with the emergency manager program in Rich County. So I'm gonna be talking about one of the most boring things possible right now and that is planning. Uh, we're required as emergency managers to have what we call emergency operations plan. Twenty years ago, I wrote one for the county and uh, it's uh. It's been in place since that time, it's over two hundred pages long, it goes into all kinds of things, it's on a. Sort of on a uh, format that FEMA likes, they call them uh. Uh, excuse me, uh. Yeah, they call them uh, emergency support functions, in other words, things like law enforcement, like communications. Like EMS, hazmat, uh, all kinds of stuff are in this big report and it uh, basically. Goes into great detail as to what you're supposed to do and all this other kinda thing. I don't know, has anybody ever looked at the report, uh, probably maybe once. Kills me every time to have to go through it, I did recently go through the whole, the whole thing and. Sort of updated it a little bit. I was talking to Mark Millet, who's the emergency manager over in uh, Box Hiller County. And he said that he'd gone through and done what he called a shorter form, emerg- or, or emergency operation plan. Now, I sent that out with, did you guys have a chance to look at that at all?
Yeah, I looked that up.
So anyway, I drafted that up and what it is, is it's not really to replace the original emergency operation. It's supposed to be supplemental, so say we have an emergency, somebody can go to that, it's like twenty pages long, well. It's like this, instead of two hundred. And you can just go through it and sort of get an idea of what you should be responding to on an emergency. So what it does is it essentially gives you an introduction, talks about why it exists. And uh, then it uh, goes into what its scope is and the scope is uh. A lot of things like all hazards, uh, special actions, resources. Response coordination, recovery, department responsibilities, training. The Emergency Operations Center, financial considerations with the towns. Basically, it would be the first document that you would go to in the event of a disaster, to see how, you know. How you do this, how you do that, who's responsible for this, who's responsible for that. Now, in reality. I've been in this game long enough to know, nobody's gonna, as soon as they get a disaster, they're not gonna run and get this and try to respond with that. They'll use this in a backup situation and they'll use their training and the resources they have to deal with the disaster to begin with. So. What I basically have come here today to do is see whether or not this is something we wanna adopt. As part of our uh, emergency operation plan and to get any input you guys might have on it. As far as uh, changes or anything like that, it's just, basically, it's a draft right now. So do you have any questions or anything on it?
No.
I mean, these are plans and plans are planned and everybody says, whatever you do, make, make a plan, but don't leave it on the shelf. Well, that's where they all get left, quite frankly, they get drug out every once in a while and they're relooked at. And uh, that kinda stuff, but uh.
Are you supposed to submit this plan to anybody at the state?
No.
Okay.
I just, all I need to do is have an approval of my county commission that they agree with the plan. And then when uh. I've submitted copies of our plan to the state for years and I don't know what they do with them, but uh.
Can I look at this real quick?
Let me go get a drink of water real quick, I'm getting hoarse.
We need a little time to look at it closer before we do that. I don't remember getting a copy of this, did, did he email this, Bill?
I, I put it in a new package, but it's not on the, it's not in.
This is the first time we're seeing it, is right now?
Yeah.
Okay, I thought I missed something.
Um, I, my suggestion is, is we go over it and, and look at it and, and uh. Let's just uh, table making motions on it until our next meeting.
Yeah, I just thought I missed an email and didn't read something I was supposed to.
I wondered about that too, but I. Well, it was just, it was Annalisa's, but it come out yesterday, so I missed it yesterday.
So anyway, I needed to uh, provide this and let somebody go over it, I've had Mark Millet go over it and I've had Janie Peterson go over it. And uh, certainly, there's a lot of little bits and pieces that you could probably. You know, say what we should hear and should do that there, but it's a general plan, so. It is based off.
So. What is, what role does Mark Millet play?
Mark, uh, he, he originated the original plan, I used his as a template to put this plan on. It's not exactly the same and his plan is the standard old plan, I replaced his, his plan in Rich, uh, in Box Hiller County. I'm not to the point where I think we oughta just do away with the big old plan, but uh. And I, you know, I look at plans primarily as an insurance policy, so if something were to happen. and I, you know, I look at plans primarily as an insurance policy, so if something were to happen and they said, well, you should have been prepared for that, you should have been thinking about that and this kind of stuff. That we have a plan in place where we said, yeah, we did think about that, whether it actually happened or not, but we did have something in place. So, that's what I visually value that these plans are. And for somebody to come in that, you know, may wanna know a little bit more about emergency management or what we do, certainly if they wanna take the time, they could read through them and and get an idea of how the thing functions.
So I didn't, I didn't have time to read it before you came?
Sure.
So I think we're gonna look at it, um, and I'll go through it before we maybe come back together and make a motion just to accept it.
Okay, that's fine.
Next month.
Okay, yeah, what I'll do at that time, I'll also run it, I've got an emerg- or a LEPC meeting coming up and I'll provide that to them too, I just wanna give you guys an update and let you know what I was working on. I mean, there's really no timeframe that needs to be uh, specific on it. And if you want, I can provide you copies, uh, with the electronic copies of the original uh, updated uh, Emergency Management Plan, or Emergency Operation Plan. The big one.
Okay.
Yeah, you probably, I mean, I think Sim and John probably have those and they they oughta probably see what you condensed down into.
Okay, so what do you think I should do as far as the form of this kind of thing, what, you know, I've often wondered, what do we do, do we print this off and set it somewhere, is it, uh, do we have files, electronic files that we can access? What do you think the best way now is to deal with this kind of stuff?
Probably post it on the website, you know?
Okay.
That that people could get to it quickly.
Okay.
Um, so they're not seeking a physical copy. That'd probably be the fastest and easiest thing to do.
Okay.
Which would be the goal for an emergency plan, you know, just as accessible as possible, as quick as possible. That'd just be my suggestion is online, which we can do that.
Okay, yeah, we can do that.
So each of the municipalities are to have their own emergency. Emergency individual in their, in their municipalities, um, is that correct, Bryce?
The legislature said that some years ago and said that each municipality ought to have an emergency manager. The only one we have in Rich County is Garden City, which he was appointed last spring. None of the other ones have emergency managers, so. I'm assuming they're falling under the umbrella of the county and uh.
Reason, reason I ask that is they oughta have a copy of this, is if that's, you know, such as, I mean, and I guess Dan Kirk is Garden City's, he should have a copy of this.
Yeah, he does, he will. So, I can easily distribute a copy, do you want him to go to the mayor's or who, or the clerk?
Um, might be a good idea if it went to the mayor's. Um, so they at least have access to, in their office to, um, I'm not sure that they are aware that, you know, that they should have a designated emergency person, emergency manager within their municipalities, I'm not sure that any of the municipalities understand that yet, so.
So what have you seen in the legislature, you were there, have you seen the other one, have all the other ones done it? My sense of talking to the other emergency managers in the state, a lot of the rural people haven't done it, but even though it was.
I don't, I'm not, I I don't know that they even know that they're supposed to, that's what I'm saying, I guess we gotta talk to the league and and see, um, and see, you know, maybe they've got a survey who has them, who doesn't, um. I know, uh, you know, Brigham City has one and Tremont has one.
Yeah, Brigham City just got a new one and uh, yeah, Tremont has one.
So I know there is some of the larger, uh, in our area, you know, in the northern region, um, and Logan, Logan has one as well, so. And I believe Smithfield has one, but anyway, I I guess I'm interested to see how that all comes together with the county, um.
So what would you like me to do, basically, you want me to uh, I can make an effort to go to the cities and present this to them, I can do whatever you wanna do.
We probably oughta just approach the cities and see what their, what their desire is, if they wanna just continue the way we're going or if they wanna have their own, appoint their own, that's up to them.
Appoint their own person?
Emergency manager like Garden City did. And then, um.
I might be in Lake Towns meeting tonight, I can check with them if you want.
Yeah, why don't you? Like I say, you know, emergency managers are, are strange position because you spend all your time preparing for something that may or might may not ever happen. And I'm certainly willing.
It won't happen according to the book.
No, that's for sure. And I'm more than happy to do whatever you want, that's sort of one of the reasons I'm here, get a little more direction, so. Okay, I'll I'll go along those lines and and uh, as far as the EMPG grant goes, uh, did you guys, uh, when you did your budget, I haven't seen a copy of the past budget, whether one exists yet or not? There's one around Annalise's.
Copy of the budget?
Yeah.
Yeah, almost.
Almost, okay, I can wait, it's not a rush. But anyway, there, if you noticed in the budget, there was, uh, what I, when I proposed, there was a excess amount of money that I got for EMPG this year, I really don't know how I got it because, but anyway, there's approximately thirty seven thousand dollars that is money that uh, the county can spend to match with EMPG, well, I know, yeah. It would be, uh, yeah, seventeen thousand. Well, the money that the EMPG, you know, is all fifty fifty and of the total amount of money that the EMPG has, uh, it has thirty seven thousand in it and that part of it, uh.
Well, there's thirty seven thousand available, but eighteen thousand of that's gotta be matched by the county.
Right, yeah, and that's sort of what you guys, so what I'm, and I, you know, I've I've sort of racked my brain and looked at what we might need. I don't know, uh, there's a lot of fun things you can buy, I guess, if they meet the thing, but I wanna make sure that, uh, I just wanted you to be aware, I haven't got anything for that specifically to spend on right yet. And we don't need to spend it either, I can easily turn it back, it's up to you guys.
So is that coming, is that from, is that available from last year or is that in this next coming year?
No, EMPG runs on the federal year, which starts in July now, so that's available this year.
Well, federal year runs on October, so it's the state year, so it would become in in July then?
Yeah, mhm. That's when I do a reporting and spending of it, the state gets it in October, we get it in.
In July?
Yeah, mhm.
Did we spend that on road signs last year or?
Yeah, we spent it on those road signs and.
Which, one of those has got to have some work done on it, I don't know how well, I don't know if it's under warranty or what it is.
Well, it's under warranty and I already talked to the guys about it, I said, what needs to be done, get to me, I'll contact them, cause they contacted me. They said, how are they working, I said, well, I know one, you know, it had a bulb out or something, I don't know what else is wrong with it.
What was wrong with it, Jared?
Something on the display, we found that it would blink, you'd have a big blank spot, but when we restart it, it would clear it and then it would come back for a certain amount of time. So I don't know if it's in the control motherboard or if it's in fiber optics, but there obviously is some kind of an issue with it.
If you can, if you can get it specified, then I'll get a hold of the guy and I can, it's under warranty, we oughta deal with it.
Well, like like I said, I I'm not quite sure what the specificity of the problem is, other than it would go out, we'd restart it, basically just like a computer, turn it back on and off and it'd work for a while. Not sure if it was the temperature, humidity, whatever it was, but it seemed to be affecting that same block of the uh, display.
Okay, I'll I'll contact them, get back to you Jared and then we can, I mean, so I can get at least get a description of what the problem is.
Yeah, let's at least report it so it doesn't fall out of some warranty and we haven't reported it yet.
Yeah, okay.
Other than that, that was very helpful.
You're using them? That's good.
Yeah, they got used quite a bit between the flooding in the spring and then along the lake.
Was that you, was that our signs that were like slowdown tourists?
Yeah.
Yeah, those are classic signs, I thought.
I'm not sure where the tourists come from.
Well, I know, but it really worked well.
We know where one Echo Three lives.
Yeah, no, it really worked well, I thought, I mean, everybody had a smile on their face. So, a couple of the quick items, uh, I uh, worked with Kevin Bogdanovich with the uh, Weather Service and uh, we filled out documentation so that Rich County is now considered a storm ready county and I'll put that on the website. Just you had to go through a bunch of questions and stuff, but anyway, I got that the other day. And we're gonna have uh, two five-year plans coming up that we're gonna have to be working on, one is the All Hazards Plan, Bragg is gonna do, do you know who's gonna do that, Bill?
I know Brian Carver.
Who?
Brian Carver.
Brian's gonna do it, now that Zach left.
I, it'll be under Brian, he'll probably have somebody working on it, but it'll be under Brian probably.
Okay, then I also met with Travis Hogs and uh, of course, he's the new Forest Fire and Sovereign Lands guy. And he's gotta redo that five-year plan we did five years ago, so we'll be working on that one too. And there was one thing that was brought up on our discussion with Travis and with uh, Mike uh, over there for fire goals, and that's evacuations and the county has uh, uh, short-term rental, I don't, yeah. We were wondering if the short-term rental, if you could put it into the requirements that they have, uh, an evacuation plan posted in each short-term rental, cause that's gonna be one of the real issues, if we ever get a fire up there. And we found that out when we had an issue up in Bridgerland. Last summer, people don't know how to get out if they're renting a house and they wanna uh, you know, they get a fire and somebody says, get out of here, they have no idea how to get out of the subdivision. So I'd like to see if Madam had, also talk to the city about that, see if they could do that too and just, just be a matter of putting it, so.
As part of the licensing?
Yeah, mhm, so when Mike inspects it, that uh, you know, they can, it just has to be a Google Earth thing or something like that. Then have the address on it, so when somebody calls, that's another deal, if they, somebody said, well, what address are you at and they have no idea what address
Yeah.
they're at, so, I'm sure you're aware of those. So other than that, that's about all I have unless you guys have any questions or comments.
I don't, no, I know UAC was looking for some input from our emergency manager, um, and I forwarded you an email, they're talking about our transportation, um, they have a consultant that they're talking to and they need some input from you about.
When did you forward that to me?
Just barely.
Okay.
Yeah, so you'll see. Maybe just read the email and follow up with them, I I think it's just a five or ten minute phone call.
Okay, good. All right, well, I'll let you guys go.
All right.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you.
So, get me back in next month?
Oh, I don't know that you need to come back in, I think it's just a matter of we'll look at it and we'll put it on the agenda to
Okay.
to probably um, have a discussion and take action if that's what we want.
Okay.
Unless we have questions, then we may have you come back in.
Okay.
All right.
All right.
Thank you. Sean.
Good morning, gentlemen.
Morning, my friends.
Sean Millen, Bear River Association of Governments, Director of Economic Development and Intergovernmental Affairs.
That gets longer every time you come to say.
I actually left out quality growth because that's a Box Elder thing that they want me to say instead of economic development. Um, I want to acknowledge Sherry Stevens with Governor's Office of Economic Opportunity here
Hi.
uh, today, uh, since that's uh, primarily what I'm here to speak about is, like last meeting, the appointments to the Economic Development, excuse me, the County Economic Opportunity Advisory Board, AKA CEO Board.
So is Sherry gonna add to, she can come up?
If if she would like, I don't mean to embarrass her, I just wanted to acknowledge that she's here.
Why don't you come up and when you need to step on his toe or?
Yep, correct me where I'm wrong.
Elbowing.
Oh, well, she's too kind, I think we all know that I could use the correction from time to time when I get in front of my skis. Anyhow, um, not to belabor the the point of my time before you today, it's really just a continuation of last month's meeting where we were requesting to occupy and fully stack or, stack can have a negative connotation, fully appoint the the board members for the CEO Board.
Remind us, did we finalize that last month or do we need to finalize it today?
You finalized three names, there was Eric, Cam and yourself, Mr. Chairman, uh, you being the appointee um, from the county. So there are a minimum of five seats that you must have. A county representative, a city within the county representative, of which Eric and Cam, I understand by your tradition, you asked Garden City to advance a couple of names and so those two gentlemen, kind of that, um.
Eric and Jordan Perry, right?
It's Cam Jarmo.
Cam Jarmo, we didn't, we didn't, was Jordan Perry ever?
Yeah.
Um, I'll have to defer to the mayor on that.
Jordan Perry and Cam Jarmo.
Okay, oh, I'm sorry, so not Eric?
No.
We have, we are though, this today.
Eric is one of those today, yeah, okay, copy that.
Decide the names, would you be super clear of who they?
And I talked to Eric.
Thank you, I I was going to ask and seek the same, okay.
I talked to Eric last month and he's good to go.
And I talked to Nikki Weston, who was currently out, was on the old one, she's good to go.
Okay, all right, so, uh, Nikki Weston, and she would represent who?
Uh, at large, what is, what's it called?
Can I use your pencil, please? My pen seems to have.
And she's on this side of the hill.
Uh, and she would represent, I'm sorry, what?
Just at large.
Public at large?
You call it.
Okay, yeah, there's a public at large, okay. So there's city, county, public at large, private sector and workforce development. Of which Sherry was previously workforce development, but now conflicted, so. I've suggested Mark Alexander and or Troy Lamb for that, um, anyway, back over to you Commissioner Bill.
So it probably would be public at large.
Okay.
Cause she wouldn't be private sector, so.
Who says Nikki?
Nikki Weston.
And was she, okay, well, the, let's, let's go back with those last, okay, th- thank you, that's where I was going to ask, but if I can back us up real quick, my recollection was that the three appointees last time were four-year terms.
Yep.
Okay, so that's Sim and Cam. And Cam represented what again? I know that he is a physical therapist, was that private sector, was he somebody by city's appointee?
Well, he was appointed by the city or recommended by the city, but he could represent the private sector.
Yeah, he could do private sector, cause Jordan represents the city, right?
Jordan could be the city representative.
So then what is up there?
We can have more than one.
Yeah, yeah, you can, like, I would, I would humbly suggest that you consider both Troy Lamb and Mark Alexander for workforce development, cause both have expressed interest to get to know the county and its communities better. But they both respectively represent different things, right, now, I mean, one is upskilling through Bridgerland Technical College and the other one works for the Department of Workforce Services and uh, does what Sherry did before, again, not to speak for her, so they they both help with the workforce development side. And and as often the case, you get folks that can kind of double dip, right, I mean, you have a private business commissioner and yet at the same time you could represent very well the county's interests, so. It's just when I do a report and when I file later, the the next year's application, there's a drop-down menu in the report that I must assign to these folks, so just knowing what your primary thought about each appointee is, they can have multiple elements they represent, but I I would just ask you to highlight the one that you want them to be known for. highlight the one that you want them to be known for, because that's how I will report it during both the reporting at the close and the application of the next new.
Right.
Okay, so I've got Nikki, public at large, a two-year term. Sim, the county primarily, and private for a four-year term. Um, Cam, as a municipal appointee, mayor?
No.
No?
Private sector.
Private sector primarily? Okay. And then Eric would be your municipal primarily?
Jordan Perry.
Oh, Jordan Perry. Oh, not, um, yes, sorry. See, I'm all over the place. And he was a four-year as well, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
His municipality.
Okay.
And then Eric could be private.
And then for a two?
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, did you guys have a preference for Troy or Mike?
Mark.
Mark?
Troy or both?
No, I either, either or both.
I, I would humbly suggest both. Just they, they'd both like to get to know the community and feel like this is a vehicle for them getting to know the community a little bit better and the businesses they're in. Because where where this county has established a tradition of these small business pass-through grants, that's a good way for them to get to know some of the businesses and where some of the opportunities for those businesses might rely. Um, Mark Alexander oversees the Entrepreneur and Innovation Center for Bridgerland Technical College. Um, primarily housed in the Logan campus. Part of Box Elder's use of these funds in this next year, they're going to open a satellite entrepreneurship center in Tremont and Garland, and he's going to oversee that as well. To kind of help get their homegrown smaller businesses, what can we do to amplify them and encourage more of that. He, he would like to just, in the same sort of way that Bear River Association of Governments covers all three counties, so does Bridgerland, and would like the same opportunity. Again, of course.
Both and that would put an odd number to.
Well, we were thinking about putting Tammy on there.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, maybe I'm missing something, but right now I have five. And if you add those to, that's seven. Tammy would make eight.
Now we're getting pretty big.
I've, I've, well, I wouldn't suggest going above nine or eleven. I wouldn't suggest that. Um, Mitch has asked to stay on if you would have him as an ex officio, meaning a non-voting member that can provide some institutional knowledge that I know would be valuable to me, since I'm new to the role. Um, and he would still continue to collect the app, applications, do some of the staff ranking and waiting, but would remove him.
Yeah, we need him to do that.
Okay. So can I say that commissioners collectively, Mitch as an ex officio, yes?
Yeah.
Okay. And then, so I think that comes down to Tammy, Troy, Mark. Thoughts? Or anybody else that you've considered in the last month?
I think it'd probably be a good idea to have the director of the Visitors Bureau be involved on the CEO Board. Who, who at this moment is Tammy.
Okay.
Um, because they're gonna have, they're gonna know what's going on. Um.
Two or four-year terms, sir? You have three or four, two at two currently?
She could be four because she hasn't been on it yet.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, I would say we just start out with, with either Troy Lamb or Mark, and then if we need to, we can add to it. But that's just because I can't think of another person.
A tiebreaker? Okay.
But I don't know either one of them, so I.
Okay. Any other thoughts, commissioners?
So I guess that, I would look for you, for your suggestion, or you guys, uh, whether it should be Troy or, or Mark. That we put on there for two years, just to stagger.
You're talking voting members, right? Because you could have both of them and then just assign.
One of the vote.
The one that's a voting member, but then you have.
And then they get to know the deal and, but just have one of them be a voting member.
Would they, would they be interested in coming if they're not able to vote?
Yeah, I can, I can tell you from my conversations with both of these gentlemen independently, they are looking for opportunities and excuses to be up here to, to network and, and such. Um, Vicki was previously, y- you know, very active.
Yeah.
And so that would be fitting of DWS and Troy. Um, in speaking with Mitch even prior to today's meeting, he and I were having a conversation about this annual small business pass-through grant. And I've mentioned to you that GOEO has expressed to me in the collective, very general sense that there's a desire to see greater accountability and, and in the reporting and ROI of these monies that the state legislature assigns to this program statewide, right? So terms like ROI or return on investment, balance sheet versus cash flow, versus your profit and loss, that oftentimes many smaller businesses may struggle to understand those terms and, and to have them measured. But those are good ways of measuring us, the success of a small or medium-sized business. Uh, larger companies are usually very well-versed in these at the leadership level. Um, Mark does that with those entrepreneurship programs. So I think there's a great case to be made about either one, and either one would take a voting role versus advisory. So I'm not trying to be obstinate here or obtuse, but you could probably flip a coin and you're gonna get a great individual either way. And, you know, if I have my two cents about it, I would encourage them to carpool up with me since they're both based out of the Logan area as well, and we just, you know, make a trip of it, so to speak, when we're coming up for these meetings. As I understand from Mr. Paulson, these meetings
Can oftentimes take.
Several hours at a stretch, so, I mean, whatever works, guys. It's, it's all about just advancing, y- you know, these businesses and, and to use the Reagan line, we're from the government, we're here to help with these grant money, so whatever we can do to help them. Do you have any suggestions, Ms. Sherry?
Um, on other CEO boards, they have both. They have a representative from DWS and tech colleges, and, and both are great people. Um, have interest in the county. I agree with Sean. I don't know that you could go wrong. Um, and I think it's great to have input from both of them on the board, um, regardless of who you have as a voting member.
Okay, yeah.
I'm fine with having them both on board and then, um, assigning, uh, one of them as a, as a voting member. Um, probably just, just for the sake of slotting in who was there, having Troy Lamb be the voting member, uh, and having Mark.
Just be the alternate. Troy can't be there.
Oh, an alternate, that's a good, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Yeah. Am I taking that as unanimity, sirs?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's all. I was kind of waiting for it to.
Okay, so just to confirm, I have Sim, Cam, and Jordan as four-year terms. Jordan would represent municipalities primarily. Cam, the private sector. Commissioner Sim for the county representative. Nikki, public at large. Eric, private sector. Nikki and Eric would be two-year terms. Tammy from the CVB or, you know, some person from the CVB and currently being Tammy, a four-year term. Representing, uh, obviously a collective of great private sector. And then Troy, uh, Lamb of DWS as the primary voting member under, uh, workforce development. And Mark Alexander from Bridgerland Technical as an alternate. And then Mitch as an ex officio?
Okay.
Okay.
Do you need to be given ex officio status, or can you just run the meeting?
Uh, I would just simply ask if you would wa- like me to be kind of their secretarial, you know, send out the public meeting notices, make sure that they're uploaded, that I can report with veracity back to GOEO, that those procedural steps take place, that the minutes are taken, that the minutes are provided and adopted at the subsequent meetings and stuff like that, then I'd be happy to do so. And then I think the best way to do that would be ex officio. I don't need to be a voting member. Um, as Mitch and I have discussed, where in order to fulfill the requirement or, or the hope for return on investment and just seeing where some of those investments are had, I understand that right now there's a requirement that applicants are either encouraged or should be, uh, providing, um, a, a balance sheet or a profit and loss. And that for understandable reasons, many of those applicants might be nervous about any other board member that might be privy, particularly in smaller communities, is a pretty standard kind of concern. Uh, irrespective of the community size, but all the more so when you're that much, you know, you're familiar with people. Um, that it's kept confidential. And Mitch and I were discussing, um, that perhaps that be kind of a staff, non-voting members don't see that information. So that they're not making determinations based on what could be a unfair advantage of knowing other people's books. Um, those are things that I feel like should be ironed out by the advisory board members, y- you know, in their first meeting or two. Uh, kind of a setting of, of a procedures, something that when I then, on their behalf, bring to you what their, uh, their advisory recommendations are, that you know that they have some sort of measuring, you know, element themselves. So you know with veracity that, yep, we're, we're making the, the decisions based on this. We've attempted to remove any kind of biases that there might be, and here you go. So we can kind of discuss some of those procedures with them and even if you would like those to then come back to you for formal adoption, however you'd like that, I'm here for it. Just let me know. Don't want to make it more formal than you want. At the same time, you know, here to share other best practices that other counties or GOEO might suggest. Okay. All right, so is that, is that a vote? Can I get that just on the record that I can represent to GOEO?
Do we need a motion of those?
I'd say move.
Okay. Second.
Okay, moving second, that, that list be the, the committee? The board, on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Excellent, thank you. So the next steps, I'll get with Mitch, we'll get all those applications um, that he's, he's now received as the close of those small business grants. Uh, closed over the weekend, given the end of the year. Um, the, the board will convene and he'll provide that information to, to you, Mr. Chairman, and the other members for review, and then we'll go from there.
Okay.
Can I just ask that I get all the names? And any of the lists, so I can put in the name, thank you.
Excellent, will do. Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, commissioners.
Any questions for GOEO or things that needs today?
I think so.
Start the new year off.
Start the new year off.
What's going on?
New year, new board. Um, we closed out our water infrastructure grant. Um, good news there. Um, our, we also closed out our Rural Communities Opportunity Grant. Um, so our grants at this point are closed, other than ready, which is always ongoing for businesses looking to expand um, and add new high-paying jobs. So that's where GOEO stands in terms of grants right now and just gearing up for legislative session. And we'll see how that goes.
So on those grants, is there some proposed in the governor's budget for replacement of those grants?
Um, GOEO is hoping for another Rural Communities Opportunity Round, which was the old part B.
Right.
Um, the, the county grant again. Um, then film incentive and then immigration is what we're looking at.
So are they gonna be separate legislation or is it actually in the governor's budget?
Those are what they've put, that, those are what they've recommended for governor's budget.
Okay.
So we'll see.
And I, I love that Sherry brought up film. Um, you may know I have a little bit of a role within the Rural Film Coalition and um, we actually had a call this morning, a Zoom call advocating for the renewal of that. It sunsets. Well, it is now technically sunsetted. And there's an additional, uh, pot of several million dollars for film, commercial, whatever kind of, y- you know, streaming, uh, video content creation that's available above and beyond a statewide incentive that exists for that industry. There's extra pot of money for those that are, are done in rural communities such as Rich County. So, um, we are hopeful for that to get passed through again this year. And since Sherry mentioned it, uh, I know I've had the opportunity to at least inform a couple of you and, uh, leave a voicemail for another, but as governing board members of Bragg, uh, you'll be pleased to know that the Ag Report grant that was submitted through the Rural Communities Opportunity Grant that we did, I, I learned, has been approved. So we'll have a further conversation of that through Bragg and the governing board, but pretty, pretty happy about that, and we'll see about the feasibility of creating an agricultural, specific, you know, kind of zoning mechanism that might also blend in rail-serve port infrastructure within the Bragg region.
Well, good job.
Sean did an excellent job. Yeah.
Was the application ginormous and wordy?
Yes. I used every, um, attachment slot that I was afforded, yeah.
Every, every character, every.
Thanks, pencil.
You guys are awesome.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming up.
It's deserved.
We're glad it's January and it's only, it's at least not forty below outside, so. I'll send you a link that'll educate you on ranches and having a payday and stuff.
Oh, okay, fair enough. Appreciate that.
It's just a little, it's a little, uh, short. Did either a guy come when we were shipping calves and they filmed us all doing all that and talks about it. It's interesting.
Okay, I sincerely would. Thanks.
Just had to listen. Okay. Mayor, thanks for coming over.
I just wanted to listen to Sean because usually he uses speaking up words after the homework.
Well, it takes more than the three of us to keep you under control, so I'm glad you're here. Okay, Commissioner Cox.
All right, we have, uh, next on the agenda, a resolution that's been an ongoing, uh, project, let me just put it that way, um, by the Utah dollars, uh, the Utah. The daughters of the Utah pioneers. And when the re- when the rest, the rest area along the lake there was being remodeled, um, there was a desire to, um, have a plaque with the names of, of the settling ancestors of those who not only was associated with, um, the settling of the valley, but also, um, part of those families that were involved in actually the, the land, um, that the rest area sits on as well. So, um, they would like to put a plaque and, and UDOT has given them permission to do a plaque. Um, which, um, they we, we had many discussions about how we were gonna do this, but anyway, we finally come down to the point of where they, um, have found the funding to generate the plaque and have done the research on the names and are going to have that, and maybe the plaque's in process at this point in time. But they have to have a resolution that, um, and I will just read it. Be therefore resolved that the Rich County Board of Commissioners for- formally supports the proposed memorial and supports the daughters of the Utah pioneering pioneers request to UDOT. UDOT wanted a, an official resolution saying that we were okay as a county, um, having that plaque placed on their their rest area. And it goes into, it just, I'll read the whole thing. The daughters of the Utah pioneers is seeking authorization to install a pioneer memorial at the Bear Lake Rest Stop. The proposed memorial requires approval from UDOT and whereas UDOT policy zero one dash zero eight requires an official resolution of support from the county commission or community before UDOT may approve the proposal. Wherefore, as the Utah pioneers, you, the daughters of the Utah pioneers has the funds to complete the project and whereas the Rich County Commission has considered the proposal and finds that project would be a benefit. So that's the, that's the resolution that was prepared, and I would make a motion that we pass that resolution and move on with their project.
I'll second that motion. Okay. Moving seconded that that we, uh, give DOT, I guess you say, the support of the installation of the pioneer memorial at the Bear Lake Rest Stop. On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries unanimously. Do we need to do this individually?
Well, we all said aye. You can call. Aye.
Yes.
Okay.
All right, um, the Garden City Special Services District, uh, some- The Garden City Special Services District, uh, submitted some names for reappointment on their board. Um, for four-year terms, um, for reappointment, and they made the suggestion of. Uh, Mike Mattson, who will replace Curtis Moldenhauer. And, uh, Craig Lambert, um, would like to, oh, excuse me. Uh, the expiring terms are Curtis Moldenhauer and Mike Mattson. Mike, 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 Mike Mattson would like to continue for another four years. And Craig Lambert would like to take the place of Curtis Moldenhauer, the same, to serve for the same amount of time for a four-year term. So the suggestion from the Special Service District, uh, the Bear Lake Special Service District, which is the sewer district, basically. Um, is for us to appoint, reappoint Mike Mattson and Craig Lambert as the, as two four-year.
Okay, I'll make that motion. Do we accept those names for the Special Service District?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, moving seconded that. Mike and.
Mike Mattson and Craig Lambert.
Craig Lambert be reappointed to the Fire District.
Special Service District.
Special Service District, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
And in review of the minutes, I would make a motion that we approve the minutes for.
Yeah, expenditures are all we got.
Oh, that's right, sorry. In reviewing of the expenditures, which that's what I was talking about, um, I'd make a motion that we approve the expenditures for. December twenty twenty-three.
Second that.
Okay, moving second that the expenditures be approved for December, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right.
Seeing no more, goodness, I would move we adjourn.
Second.
Okay, moving second that we adjourn, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Perfect, thank you. Earliest ever.